Self-directed piece is something that we're really pushing our students toward. Why we're doing a subless classroom? Just on average, this month at the high school, we've had two and a half absences. So our sub demands, you know, this time of year are very high and very consistent. Today was a really busy day, and I'll talk about that in a bit. We have a financial aspect of it. We have different ranges on how much subs are compensated based on their number of days here. One thirty-five is kind of that middle range, so we've done it four times, four full days, for savings of about five hundred and forty dollars. The technology, we have the iPads, we have Google Classroom. We have teachers who are very skilled at sharing their lessons and activities through Google Classroom. So students really do have access at their fingertips to all of the activities and the lessons. And a big piece for me is the student behavior here. You know, I'm in month five or six, and just observing student behavior. We, overall, we have a very well-behaved student body. And when I talk, I'll talk about the process here in a second, but when I talk to our students that we're going to have the subless classroom, I talk about trust a lot, that we trust that you can function in this environment, we trust that you can be productive, we trust that you can behave, and that is really the key, is having faith in our students that they can do this. All right, so how the subless classroom works? Teachers have volunteered on days that they knew they were going to be gone. I talked about this at one of our leadership meetings in the fall. One science teacher really grasped onto it and said, "Hey, I'm going to be gone in about a week. I think we can give it a shot." So I wasn't anticipating doing it that early in the year, but wanted to do it, and we went with it. Like I said, absence is known in advance. This morning, we had two teachers, they got sick themselves or they had a sick kid, so we didn't know until this morning that they would be gone, so they're scrambling with lesson plans, you know, at the end to get something in place. So these are absences that we've known in advance. They're at a workshop, they have a personal day or something like that. The teachers who have utilized the subless classroom are those who are pretty skilled and pretty advanced with their use of technology. When I talk to the students about the activities, you know, that will happen, I say, you know, study hall is not an example, is not something we're going to do for that day. So they'll continue with the curriculum, so teachers will push that out through Google Classroom. Before it happens, I will go into the classrooms and give about a ten-minute preview of what they're going to see and talk about this, talk about the why, talk about the trust, talk about preparing self-directed learners when they leave here. They will have the tools, you know, in their future to be successful, it's up to them to access the tools. And like I said, teachers share activities, lessons electronically. So the day of, when the teacher is gone, students report to the North Commons, the senior lunchroom, so that's the spot for the subless classroom. We do have something, you know, contractually where we can assign teachers, you know, about ten, fifteen minutes of their prep time, so either myself or one of those teachers that I assign will get them started. So when I talk to these students, you know, the day before, I ask, "If I were subbing in your calculus class, what would I do at the beginning of the block?" They say, "Well, you'd take attendance, and you'd make sure we knew what we had to work on." So in those first five minutes, the adult will take attendance and make sure that they know what they need to work on. The teacher that is going subless for the day helps designate some student leaders, too, student leaders to help if people have questions on what they're supposed to work on, or if the adult that stops in needs some assistance taking attendance. So there's a student leader designated. Students self-manage restroom breaks and locker visits. So again, before I talk about the trust, I'll say, "Hey, if you need to use the restroom, what should you do?" Students will probably reply with, "Well, I go to the bathroom." And then what do you do? You return. If you need to go to your locker, same thing, you self-manage that. Myself, Mr. Balloon, are responsible for student behaviors and student needs, so students have asked, "What if we have something big that happens? What if we have a lockdown, something like that?" Well, we know, Mr. Balloon and myself, we know that we're responsible for that group of students. We're strategic about that location, the North Commons, because that is a high-traffic area. A lot of our adults walk by that space, it has a lot of, a lot of eyes on it. Plus, we do have a camera, I tell them that, we do have a camera that is in that space. But with that level of trust, I tell them, "I'm not going to sit at my computer all day, nor is Mr. Balloon, and just watch your behavior in the North Commons." And then adults periodically check on the workspace. I'll pop in there sometimes halfway through the block, just to see what's going on and how productive students are. Afterward, we have checked to see the impact of it and how successful it's been. When I talk to the students, I tell them that we're evaluating this in two different areas. We'll look at the behavior, which is the real-time piece, so I'll know if something's going on. Other adults in the building will let us know if something is going on. And then the work quality and work production, which the teacher will evaluate. The first time we did it, we had one behavior report, and that was a group of three boys going to their locker together. That was the worst event. So if they would've gone to their locker individually, they would've been fine, but people were just, you know, very cautious and curious about this and more watchful of behavior, so it looked like those guys were wandering the hallways, but they legitimately had to go to their lockers. Work production, asking the teachers as they have returned, how much work was produced in the subless environment versus having a sub present? And they said they didn't notice a difference either way, so they said the same or better. And then the work quality, which we care about as well, teachers have said that there's no clear difference, you know, having a sub or going subless. And then just an experience today, like I said, we had two teachers who, in the morning or overnight, we found out that they weren't going to be here today. We had a substitute at the front desk, you know, trying to piece everything together to make sure every block was covered, with teachers giving up their prep time, with using the subs we already had in the building to cover, you know, those classes. The first hour of the day today was a very busy one, to make sure we had everything covered. On a subless day, okay, we advertise, we send out in the morning from the office who's going to be gone each day, and teachers know that it's a subless environment, so it's, you know, there's work on the front end, but on the day of, we don't have the scrambling to make sure everything is filled. The student input, so asking them after the fact, how did it go? And this is on a scale of one to five. So asking work completion, three would be, "It was about the same as a day where we have a substitute." One would be, "It was far worse." Five would be, "It was far better." Totalling all of them from the times that we've done it for full days, the averages are four point one-one, okay? Meaning that students felt like work completion was better than an average day with a sub. Behavior, same thing, same scale, really very similar number, so behavior on average, much better, or significantly better than a typical day. Very short question, "Do you think we should do it again?" Ninety-eight percent of students said, "Yeah, I think Becker School should do this again." Comments, I threw some of them up there. They're mostly positive, you know, the positive ones talk about, "Hey, I appreciate that you trust us." You know, kids talking about, "In that calculus example, if I were subbing in a calculus class, I would not be able to help them with the material." The people that can help them with the material are the people sitting next to them. When a sub is there, you know, there are times where they need to quiet down the behavior, quiet kids down, but in the subless environment, kids feel like they can talk to each other more about the curriculum. Couple of comments in here, you know, some students just aren't mature enough to handle subless environment, but that's why we monitor the behavior. But it's one reason we do it, too, is because we want to build that skill, that independence. And now what, where do we go from here? I shared the data, so it is something we plan on, you know, using more. Taking a look at some of the policies within subless, like when the students leave, you know, can students self-monitor, should we have a sign-out process for that? Third block is our lunchtime, so if a teacher who's going subless has a third-block class, we still have utilized, you know, subs coming in from the outside or our internal subs or teachers to cover that, so do we have a spot that we could utilize third-block to go subless? Other grade levels, we have used this with, first time we did it, it was mostly tenth graders, we had success there. We've used it with twelfth graders, we've had success there. We've used it with ninth graders, success there. So, you know, can it expand to other levels on, on down to the middle school? You know, there are times it doesn't work. If a teacher has a test planned for that day, I say, "You know what, we'll find a sub for you then, we'll go traditional." There are some classes it may not work for, like industrial tech classes, many days it won't work. But if they do have some, you know, safety assignments, okay, maybe it is possible to deliver that electronically and go to the subless classroom. So far, it's been a success, and look forward to using it more.
Great. Questions from board? Any restrictions on the number of days, like no more than one day in a row, or?
Yeah, we haven't run into that, but that would be my recommendation right now. If a teacher has, is going to be gone, you know, two straight days, let's use subless for one of the days.
Okay. My second question's actually, everything you sound said, so it's very reasonable and good, until I got to the scoring, and I kind of interpret the scoring as, do we need to spend some time looking at our substitutes, quality of substitutes, capability of substitutes, if we're really getting this much more, I don't know, not having anybody there? You know, it seems kind of extreme. I would've, I would've expected a little more moderate reply, I guess, from the, from the students, so it kind of makes me question, well, do we have that much trouble when we have a substitute? You see, grades on it, so.
I think, I think a lot of it, and it could be different from the high school, from the elementary, but just finding subs in general, I think a lot of it is, if we can find a body, we're going to put them there.
Yeah, you know, so today, again, we were searching for people up through the beginning of the day. The subs that we have coming in, honestly, I'm very pleased with them, so, you know, some kids have asked, "Well, do you plan on getting rid of Mr. Blank or Mrs. Blank?" I'm like, "No, we're always going to have a need for substitutes, and, and we have a number of retired teachers that sub here and in the other buildings, and we're fortunate to have the people that we have." So is everyone, you know, the brightest and the best? No, but overall, I really like the crew we have coming in.
All right. Thank you.
One of the things I was wondering, too, is, you know, how does this compare to the e-learning, where they're staying at home versus, you know, they're here in our environment, but they're still on, and things like that?
I think it's a perfect parallel. Like the, the activities delivered through Google Classroom here would be very similar to an e-learning day, you know, what a teacher would be delivering there.
Except they're sitting with all of their peers, and they can, I mean, I can only imagine that it would be better than the, much better than an e-learning day or something like that.
Right.
More questions, Connie or Ryan?
How many, so in a given day, how many subless classrooms have you had?
So we've only done one a day, and that's what I said, as we'd start, so in the North Commons, it, North Commons is a big space, but the more kids you get in there, the more behaviors you're going to have and more opportunity to get distracted. So we've done one teacher per day.
Do you see it going, I guess, maybe the follow-up to that is, is do you see them, and maybe it's because of the behavior piece, putting them in the classrooms themselves where they would have been, rather than putting them, I get the high-traffic, people have their eyes on it, but also that can be a place where there can be a lot of noise, concentration, stuff like that, had they been in a classroom where it's more quiet?
Yeah, my caution would be the supervision piece on that.
Right, right.
So in the North Commons, we do have the, the traffic by it, you know, not traffic through it necessarily. People are walking by, you know, plus that a camera piece, too. If there's something big, we have it.
Yeah, completely fair.
I think it's really nice that you pick out a leader or two that's in the classroom, and maybe down the road or at the end of the year, you recognize the leaders and what they've done, and it makes a possibility of an example to the school, and even an award for recognizing that you have really good leadership, really good students that have leadership qualities. That's always a...
And that is kind of a backup plan, too, so previous experience, kids would say, "Well, I had no idea what I was supposed to do." Oh, it's been shared by the teacher already, you know, it's through Google Classroom or whatever platform you use. Plus, you have that, that student leader there that can answer questions about how to access things, where to access things.
I just hope stronger kids in the classroom that can take the time and students are comfortable asking them. It's, it's up to them for a possible really good, really good outcome, I would think.
I would just like to commend you and your staff for trying it out. I mean, I think, yeah, these are teenagers, they should be able to self-monitor their student group, so I think they're taking the steps and trying it out.
Thank you.
I agree.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the next step of, you know, if we could talk about flip classrooms and those types of things, it's really some of that, too. So, again, when you, when you get out of here, going to college or going to work, you're, you're not going to be having somebody tell you what to do and all those types of things, so that twenty-first century, self-directed, it's kind of that way. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Superintendent's report. All right, we'll start with Taylor. She's ready to go. Taylor, are you in?
Yeah. So, um, in January, there was parent-teacher conferences held at the beginning of the month, and there were several activities that ended. The one-half play finished their season with a fourth place at sections, and then the winter dance team finished their season with a fourth and fifth place at sections as well. The N H F blood drive was on January twenty-fourth, and all sixty seats were filled, and they were able to collect forty-seven units of blood this month, this time. And also, in upcoming things, there will be a jazz band concert held next Monday night at seven P.M., and a number of students will be attending the solo and ensemble event in Wilmer on February twelfth. There will be a basketball varsity doubleheader on February eighteenth, and this event will be raising funds for a nonprofit that aims to assist cancer patients. This month is also when ninth through eleventh graders, as well as incoming eighth graders, will begin registering for their courses next year. And then, at the end of the month, there is a winter semi-formal dance being held on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
One other, I think you missed, the wrestling team.
Oh, sorry.
Took second.
Yeah, I missed that. Yeah, the wrestling team took second at their competition on the thirty-first, and then they had four state qualifiers at the freshman region, seventh state qualifier.
Thank you. From my report, we've been meeting regularly. I've been meeting with district administrators and directors, which I supervise, to continue to focus on their goals and support their building areas. The executive team with the building principals, myself, Director of Technology, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, we met, I think it was last week, for, we're starting to plan staff development for next year, and the staff will get a survey. We're trying to work more on, on some personalized learning with the staff, so they'll get a lot of input on, on what opportunities we're going to try to provide for them, and then we're going to try to facilitate that as an admin team, executive team. And like I said, looking forward already to next year with staff development, thanks. The district goals, Kevin, Rick Kraus, myself, have met with a variety of facility consultants to help us with our, one of the school board's strategic goals, develop a long-term facilities plan, which considers student enrollment projections and bond debt levies. So there's a group that you guys are familiar with, I'm sure I C S and M L A Architects are going to help us out with that, and they've already started getting the ball rolling with, with some of that since I wrote this up, so we, we're going to be working with them. They'll be doing demographic studies and some of the long-term planning, and they're going to meet with Rick and go over some of those things, and I'll share that with you once that's completed and have that planned, so we can meet that goal and have things lined up at least.
There was some community planning of fields and all that kind of stuff around the community.
The green space, there's a green space study, yeah. I have my hands on that, too, yep. And I think that came through a joint venture between the city and the school district, from what I've seen. So, yeah, that, and I don't know if I, I don't think I C S did that, but I do have my hands on that, and I have some of the other information from the last couple of years, from surveying, surveying community members and staff members as far as facility needs that they, they viewed. The next thing, one of the, Minnesota Department of Education has not supported the use of Z-scores, it doesn't use the use of Z-scores anymore. So I was looking at possibility of re-meeting, I guess, or redoing the district goals that we've set in place for next year. I know we, you guys have approved those.
Yeah, can we talk about that in the strategic planning?
Yep, yeah.
Item four.
And so, I have that little note in there, but there's another spot in the board agenda to discuss that as well. Yeah, just, we can talk about that later, I guess, the whole thing. The M S B A officers workshops are taking place throughout February. Board members should have received an email from M S B A, and if you want to sign up for that, let Angel know, and we'll get you signed up. And I believe Mark is, is doing the, the board chair one.
Yeah.
All righty, so if anyone else wants to do an officer meeting, let us know, and we'll, we'll get you signed up. That's all I have.
Aaron, did we, did any of us go to the board officer meeting? I think I went to the...
I did the board chair.
Yeah, I think I did as clerk, too.
I did as treasurer.
You did as treasurer.
Did the superintendents go in with?
Yeah.
Yeah?
He backed down and went chair with me.
Okay.
Any questions on the superintendent's report? Committee reports, I think you, there was a financial committee?
Yeah, I can report on that. So Connie, Ryan, and I met with the team and had our first meeting on the finance committee. It was good to see a more detailed line item budget, so it was nice that Kevin prepared that, and I know it was a lot of work on his part, so we appreciate that. A lot more manual work in the budget area than I'm used to in the business world, so I appreciate the work Kevin does, and we have to see a little insight of that. Kevin gave us some ideas what he'd like help on in preparation for future budgets, and we gave some requests for things we'd like to look deeper into, and we're going to set up a schedule where we look deeper into specific areas in the coming months as we meet. Ryan shared some learnings from the M S B A conference, as well as his own experience as a C P A, and it looks like it's going to help us improve as a district processing disbursements to retirement accounts. So that was good. Kevin took immediate action on that, so good job on that. That's all I have.
Anything else to add from finance? No. Okay, and Connie, your transportation safety?
Yes, so the transportation safety committee met on January twenty-second. I actually met with Tom on the twenty-third, just because of a work conflict. So the majority of the discussion was centered around the five-point car seat harnesses in, that are in the buses right now. So Minnesota state statute states that if they're there, they need to be used by age-appropriate, weight-appropriate children, so, yes, and those can fit up to, I want to say ninety pounds, I think is what he said. So we could potentially have, like, fourth graders sitting in these car seats. So the big question is, how are we going to deal with what we have in, in our buses currently? It's, you know, it's going to be an issue. I mean, we have kids that aren't going to want to sit in those car seats, and, I mean, parents can written, by, by writing, opt out of that, but I don't know how we're going to monitor that. So that's something that we'll be discussing in future meetings, because it's not going to be, I mean, pretty soon, we're going to probably have Minnesota saying, "Okay, everybody, we need to have seatbelts in the buses," and that's going to be, I personally have issues with that, because how do you, how does a bus driver make sure everybody's in those seatbelts, and that's who's going to be liable if something happens, so.
Is it newer buses versus older buses that have the five-point harnesses in versus regulars?
Exactly, I think you can elect to have them, and we did, because we have quite a few E C F E kids that need car seats. So, you know, it was done just being proactive and, and having that, not as a, "Oh, no, now we're stuck having to use them if, even if they're, you know, even if a student isn't required to wear them, if they're there, they, you know, they need to use them." So, I mean, that's my understanding, I know from the bus driver, that's how we got started.
Now, if you don't have E C F E kids on the bus, it's casey twelve now, next, who's next in line?
Yeah.
And then who buckles them in if they're not able to do it?
And who gets them out?
Yeah.
Yeah, a driver cannot be out of their seat at a stop, you know, trying to get kids out of, I mean, then they're not watching the traffic flow, and, you know, there's just a lot of issues with it.
Logistics.
Yeah.
We have a policy that we're, like, parents or guardians can't come on the bus, so they can't put them in unless we change that policy. He's like, with the seatbelts, Iowa does have mandatory seatbelt use on buses, school buses.
Be interesting to interview some people that are...
See what they're doing, yeah.
See how it goes, or what they, what are their options? And I know he has in here that St. Cloud, they don't have those five-point car seats in their buses, because E C F E or anybody that would need a car seat is on a sped bus, which would have those, have those in there already. So they don't use mainstream buses for early childhood or, or kids that would need a car seat. That's one example, but, yeah, so it's just something that there's...
So do, so do school buses have completely different requirements other than regular statutes? So if you're, I'm going to call unlucky, and you're short and don't weigh enough on a, in a car or a van, you would have to be in a booster seat and a seatbelt, but on a bus, you don't, you wouldn't have to use the five-point harness? Is that what I'm...
Yeah, if they don't have one.
That's the change.
It depends on the gross vehicle weight. Smaller school buses, yeah, bigger school buses, no. Anything over ten thousand pounds, no.
Okay.
Anything under, yeah.
Yeah, so that was kind of the gist of the conversation, and, you know, we're trying to, as a committee, trying to, you know, brainstorm ways that we can work around, you know, what do we do with these five-point car seats, and, you know, how do we, do we implement it in future buses that we purchase and that type of thing?
Maybe like a ride at Valley Ferry, get on it, and everything's down. Pinches you down, and then...
The bus people would say, "You hit a button in the other."
Yeah. The good news is, we're probably not the first district that's had this problem, so somebody out there's probably got more information than we can get.
Yeah, I know, we've been getting information from other districts, and, yeah.
Yeah.
They're struggling with it, just like we are. Nobody that I've heard of has really done anything against it.
But the, but the way this reads is, is we're going to have to, per statute, so then, does the question, you know, given our lease payment on the bus or whatever, do we trade the bus?
the buses in to get them that don't have five-point?
We can take them out.
Take the seat out and put in regular seats.
Take them out.
And stop ordering them with the five-point harness.
Okay. I just hear all kinds of questions. Okay, so who's going to take them out? When they're going to take them out?
Right, right.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments on that? All right, moving forward to the consent agenda?
I'll second.
It has been moved to accept. Any, I'm going to pull out item H just for a separate discussion, because we have a couple of dates to talk about, or a couple of months to talk about there. Any other ones that group wants to talk about? Okay. If there are no other ones, all in favor, signify by saying aye for items A through G. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item H, I want to talk about those, so there's a couple, a couple of months we need to talk about. The first one is November. So because of having the election this year, we can't, if we had our meeting on the first week in November, we'd end up having a subsequent meeting in order to canvass the vote. So I think we could talk about, maybe the ninth would be the best date.
Veterans Day?
It is Veterans Day, but, I mean, Veterans Day itself is the 11th, of course, but it's the Monday.
Veterans Monday.
It's a federal holiday. I believe we still have school, so it's not a, it's not a non-school day.
We should be good. We should be able to have the meeting on that day, I believe. Is it on there, November 9th?
It says November 11th is Veterans Day.
Yeah.
Well, November 11th would be Veterans Day, and we'd have the Veterans Day program and all that kind of stuff. But November 9th for having the school board meeting should be okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so just keep that in mind for a second, because the second one I want to talk about is June. So the June board meeting, I know I will not be here that first week. Actually, the first and second week, I won't be in the country, so, I mean, I'm okay, Lori, if you wanted to leave that meeting, I just wanted to have the discussion before, you know, a couple of months before, if we wanted to move the meeting.
I'm okay to move it. I think I'm, I'm going to be out of town by... No, I'll be, I'll be back.
Because I won't be back until...
Come back on Sunday.
Yeah, I won't be back until the 13th. So if we move it for me, that moves all the way to the 14th.
I'm good with whatever. Moving.
I think yes, we leave it.
Just leave it?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay, I'm okay with leaving it to you.
Is it the first?
You'll be back to that first?
Yep, be back on Sunday.
So we need a motion to move to November 9th from November 2nd?
Correct.
So moved.
Okay.
On the second?
Second by Lori. Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, so we're canvassing at the same time, is that ju, does that just become a agenda item inside our regular meeting, or is it a separate meeting technically after our regular meeting?
I believe they changed it just a few years ago, that you can include it with the meeting, just like the...
Standard meeting. Okay. It just has to be, because of the number of days, it has to be more than three days after the election and less than 10 days after the election. Just clarifications. I'm, I'm good. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item four is strategic planning. You want to start the discussion there?
So going back to what I was talking about earlier, with Z-scores and the things, we have that as one of our goals, and I just having a better grasp of, of the district and things, I know we approved those in October, November, and that was at the beginning of stages, but I would like to kind of have a, maybe a school board work session around March sometime, and revisit those, and we could get some discussion going and things like that, and then I could prepare some stuff. Perhaps it comes up at May or June meeting, we can have an update. We'd still have it before we start next school year, but it'd give me a better opportunity to kind of meet, meet the need. One of the things I struggle with, with the district goals, is identifying goals for directors and heads of different departments that are more closely related or directly related to those, and that would be something we would look at. So one year of growth to a teacher, it looks different than one year of growth to the Director of Transportation, to Food Service, or whatever it happens to be. Like I said, I feel like I have a better grasp of the district, and by March for sure, I'll have an even better grasp. We'd have to remove the previous goals and set new ones, and I, there's nothing wrong with the outline of the goals, the idea of them, one year of growth for the first one, and the second one is that finance, which probably won't change at all, but maybe adding some different, different, I'm trying to think of the word, like long-term plans in different areas and things like that. So I just wanted to see if you guys are interested in maybe doing a workshop.
If you guys don't, a couple of comments first. I mean, the, the goal and the goal-setting process, the strategic planning process, you know, Steve had driven a lot of that, and I think we need to give Jeremy a chance to kind of get his feet underneath it and be able to set those, those goals. I went to a, so one of the sessions at MSBA that I was able to attend, started off with the discussion of this constitutional amendment that's been talked about with regard to education, and one of the big things that they're pointing to is metrics and measures, and be able to come up with metrics and measures that go beyond just test scores, but, and even for us in our vision, self-directed learners in 21st century, those types of things. And so it seems to me that we might revisit, retool our strategic planning process, and so when Jeremy and I talked about it, I think both of us kind of were, maybe we need to, we do need to have a board workshop around this, to be able to talk through, how would, how would we go through that strategic planning process that works within the context of basically our, most of our administration changing over in the, in the last year-plus. So I just wanted to have those couple of comments, just kind of set that context and what does the rest of the board think?
Piece about Z-score not being the state-approved measuring stick anymore. What is?
I don't know if they, I mean, they have, they have the years worth of growth, but not necessarily tied to the Z-score, so they have the projected growth for each individual.
Go ahead if you want to.
I'm, I'm doing a webinar next week, so I'll come back with more information after next, next week. The state's kind of trying to come up with, they, they do, they've been in that growth model, and so that's a number that's put out there. They have a growth model, and that's basically students moving from does-not-meets to meets or partially meets in the MDA, so it's still using the MDA matrix that they're using, but as far as the Z-score itself, they don't support that, and so this, this is the conversation the state is having.
The second comment, I guess, is just a comment, is, you know, our vision and mission as a district is focused on preparing the self-directed learners. It is all about the students. Nothing about that should prevent you from being able to set goals for the rest of the team. I'm not so sure we have to set them at the school board level for all the various departments or line sites. I mean, just taking it back to, you know, my business world is, you know, everything is focused on what we do as a business, and everything outside of that box is support, and the same is true of the district. Everything outside of the, focused on the student learning is a support role. And we can set as many goals out there as you want outside of here, I just don't know that, I don't want to get too deep into trying to establish those goals at the board level. So I'm, I'm interested to see what you're going to propose. I'm not saying don't give anything back, I just don't know how big or wide we want to go at the board level with that stuff. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep. Using that mission is what you're saying?
Yeah.
And get people to aim towards that.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically what I've done is created some type of long-range plan in various categories with the, with the work of the board, with the help of the board. Input from them, and, because you guys have different fingers out into the, the school district as well, and using that to create those umbrellas, I guess, for, for different areas. You know, we've, I've done it in the past with technology, facilities, finance, instruction, communication, and then we created, you know, from the vision statement, we created that, just that one step down from that, and then everyone else attacked those, those pieces. Okay. But I, I see what you're saying as well.
Well, I, and I just don't want you to feel restricted that, I don't think anybody at the table here that speaks up is worried about you creating goals for people that don't align with the ones that we set at the high level, and should be able to...
And we can still, I mean, I can still do that through me, I guess, like you're saying.
You know, transportation, you know, there should be, we do a lot of our own maintenance. We should have a maintenance standard for how well our buses run. Otherwise, are we really using them effectively? You know, there's a lot of things we can look at, but, that's just my thought.
Yeah, thanks for that, Jason. And I, I think it's, it's not the idea to dig down another, another set of levels, but I, I think, you know, Jeremy has these ideas of kind of some focus areas, and that's what they brought forth too at the MSBA conference, was they gave areas like, of course, student achievement, but community involvement, some, some different areas, that we might just be able to quickly get some, generate some objectives towards those things. And I think one of the things I wanted to talk about too is really, like you're, you're talking about, Jason, that Jeremy has some freedom to set these objectives for the people that report to him, that we may not have said anything about do something this way, but you have some freedom to be able to set that for your director for us, that may, as long as there's no misalignment, but we may not have told you exactly what we were thinking on them, but those ideas, right? You guys?
The only comment I was going to make, just, I trust the board. If we do something in March, just given my work schedule, chances are I probably won't be there. Just throwing that out there.
And it may just be the board helping me come up with what areas.
That's your April looking.
Where areas are, have any...
First part.
I think April 12th was a great day.
April 16th? Yes. April 16th, I'm good.
But maybe the board just comes, helps me come up with the categories we look at. And we can go from there. Otherwise, we can use the direct...
It's a worthwhile conversation, it's a good workshop.
And then part of it, the work session piece where it's not necessarily, doesn't even have to go back to the board for a vote, I mean, we can still keep the goals that we have, it's just getting some input from you guys and...
I think coming prepared with those things and then having input from the board would be appropriate.
Well, and, and so the other, the other piece that sort of relates to this, is not directly related, and just having a, again, conversation with Jeremy about, is having some methodology for the superintendent's performance review and giving them feedback on that. You know, to be able to have objectives and goals that we're relying on for that, that were not in place before he got here, but rather are, are part of what he's got input into. So we have to start working towards that as well, and that's why I didn't want to wait too long, and, I mean, I understand your schedule and everything. But I, I think if we waited too long into the year, then we're talking, we're already at his review time in June, July, and not given an opportunity to, to show what he can do. Connie, anyone?
Yeah.
Anything else for me? Strategic planning. So is there a time in March we can set a workshop date? Do you have a suggested date?
Uh, no. What's that?
I do it all?
I can do that.
That's probably the easiest way.
Is there a specific day of the week that works? Mondays or Wednesdays?
Mondays are always working.
Mondays and Wednesdays are safer, I guess, I don't know about you guys.
I'm not worried.
All right.
I'll send some Mondays and Wednesdays.
Yeah. Send our due to plan, we'll look at having that. Okay?
Yep.
Anything else? Your turn. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's Ryan, right away.
I don't think it's running.
Yeah, we'll, we'll...
Hey.